By love and devotion to the flag, our standard, oh glory, a symbol of courage. And wherever she waves, there's respect because your loyalty has given her dignity that shouts freedom is everybody's job. Of the United States, that means we've all come together. States of the United, excuse me, means we all come together. States, individual communities that have united into forty-eight at that time, great states. Forty-eight individual communities with pride and dignity and purpose. All divided by imaginary boundaries, yet united to a common cause, and that's love of country, of America. And to the republic, a republic, a sovereign state in which power is invested into representatives chosen by the people to govern. And the government is the people, and it is from the people to the leaders, not from the leaders to the people. For which it stands, one nation being so blessed by God, indivisible and capable of being divided. With liberty, which is freedom, the right of power for one to live his own life without fears, threats, or any sort of retaliation. And justice, the principle and qualities of dealing fairly with others for all, for all. That means everybody, boys, girls, this is as much your country as is mine. Now we'll recite the play of the legions, but he put in a little caveat at the end of this. Since he was a little small boy, we've added two states, which would have been Hawaii and Alaska, to the country. And two words have been added to the play of the legions, under God. Wouldn't it be a pity if someone said, that is a prayer, and it need to be eliminated from schools? I thought that in today's climate, everybody needs to read this and think about, you know, we are a republic. And it is power from the people to the leaders, not from the leaders to the people. And we all should be standing together against everything else to keep our freedom every day. All right, so now we'll have the invocation by Pastor Horries and play of the legions.
So first of all, I want to thank you all for allowing the growing faith community in Folly Beach to participate in your meeting. And I also thank you for your support of the faith community. We have what I consider a tremendous relationship with each other. And I want to thank you all for keeping us safe. And, you know, we all enter into a path like we want to be council people, or we want to be mayor, whatever. And we all have a worldview of that. And then we all have this specific goal that we want to achieve as that person, and then a pandemic hits. Or God forbid, the H-word, the hurricane hits. But I want you to know, there's always a morning after after that hurricane, when everything gets rebuilt and restored, redone. And there's always, and there's a vaccine that's going to get us out of this thing before summertime crunch. Praise the Lord. So the Christian community this time of year celebrates Advent. And it is a time of expectation, of hope. As we expect and hope the vaccine gets to us soon, we also expect and hope the return of our Lord Jesus Christ comes soon. And we also wait with joyful anticipation for the birth of our Savior that we celebrate every year at Christmas time. And we do that with hope and joy and peace and love. And that would be my prayer for each of us tonight, Lord. A benevolent giver of all things, Lord, would you please fill us with hope and expectation and joy and peace and love as we endeavor to make Folly Beach a quality life for everybody in Jesus' name, amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with ever changing justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. Okay, so this time of year gets, you know, this is Mary getting to do a couple of nice jobs once in a while. And this is the time, some of these nice jobs. I don't, I didn't have to do the hard job of picking the next employee of the year. That falls on some pretty broad shoulders sitting here in a committee of three. So I would just say, I am glad you picked the person you picked because they work hard, they're diligent. They're very caring person that tries to make sure everything is perfect all the time. And we know when we live in the world, well, that's never going to happen, but it makes their life a little bit harder sometimes. And I try to remind them of that. So did you all have a chairman of y'all's committee?
Ms. Ray.
Ms. Ray, you're the chairman of the committee? Would you like to call out the name of, would you like to call out the name of the employee of the year?
Well, sure, I'd be honored to. So this year's employee of the year is Ms. Colleen Jolly.
That's awesome.
There you go.
That's awesome. It's Team Colleen for sure. Not really Jolly.
Rose, you're welcome. And thank your coworkers for nominating. So it's the next job is even harder job because I don't have a committee of three that does this. So it's the citizen of the year. And I was sitting around thinking, wow, who's going to get the citizen of the year? And all of a sudden, manna from heaven comes via email. And then talking to some other folks, some really good input, for a citizen of the year. This person not only does stuff for the city, that the city don't know about, basically. But they also do a lot of things for a lot of other people in the communities, in surrounding communities. So saying that, I will say Winston Churchill summed it up very well in a quote by him. And he said, "We make a living by what we get, but we make a life by what we give." So with that, I would like to say, Lyle, you must have a heck of a life. Step up here. Like, you know, I don't know if you've ever given how many years kids have stood, I won't put you on the spot. But, you know, Eric needs to hire you as a drainage consultant.
And I will bring my level.
Some other things, some other things. So for you, since we're not having a Christmas parade this year, you do get your picture. And we will make sure that you, bring the picture around so that you can see it. So we will make sure next year when we have a parade, we'll put you in the parade and all these other stuff that goes along with it. But thank you very much.
Well, thank you all.
And thank your neighbors for letting me know who's who out there.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
So now I get to move right along here. Staff reports. So Mr. Letts, you're up first.
Some good news. We teamed up with Dominion, I heard, I heard it was actually on the news this morning on Channel Five. I didn't know about that. We've teamed up with Dominion to continue on with an island-wide LED change out for all the utility lighting. It kind of, it's in keeping with our strategic plan and all the other things we're trying to do out here. So probably by mid, probably getting close to summer, we should be able to make that, see that transition happening. I don't know if you have the memo put out in front of you, but we are going to get to do all this and still save $143 a month in our actual utility bill off the top. And then it is forecasted to save us 58,000, kind of exact number for forecast, 58,000 kilowatts. And our rate that we pay is approximately 10 cents a watt. So that translates to 5800 bucks a month, which will be a little more than 69,000 a year in energy cost as well. So that's pretty exciting. I think everybody out here liked the little pilot project we did last year. Cooper and this way and then up here by the bridge. So the net gain, the only lights that won't be done in this phase will be the Senate Street Decorative Lighting. They don't have those available yet. But all the utility lighting on the poles up and down O'Island will change out to an LED. Get better quality of light and more focused beam and a whole lot of savings and going green again.
The lights that the TVPC did, were all those Spanish, like they were, okay.
And we only, as far as I know, we only had a couple of negative comments overall, and there were positive response.
Yeah, and they were easily fixed.
The TVC project also added some mid-block lighting. Will this include any additional mid-block lighting?
No adds, this is a straight change out of what we have out there for the new LED fixtures. Be the same pole, same location. You know, as, when they get this completed, if we find a dark spot, we can tackle that as well.
Do we, do we own the existing equipment?
We really don't. We lease it all. Everything's done on a lease, not a 30-year lease.
So there's nothing for us to sell in terms of the existing technology?
No, sir. But the good thing is we net out and saving money each month that we're paying right now for the old less efficient fixtures that are out there. Kind of exciting. Thank you.
So as we mentioned, I mentioned earlier, Heather Springs was under the weather, so we'll bring her back next month. So now we have to listen to the employee of the year.
Curses.
No, we call you that. No, seriously, thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, so I'm here to request permission to, for our Momentum Tennis Team, that's a part of our Parks and Recreation Department, to offer a holiday tennis camp for our residents on Friday, January 1st and Saturday, January 2nd.
That's your mask off. I don't know if I can hear you at home very well, but you muffled to me, so I imagine you're muffled there.
Okay. Sure, it's just that you don't like my leopard print.
No, I love it.
So just to repeat myself, requesting for our Momentum Tennis Team, Coach Doug and Coach Ryan, to offer a holiday tennis camp on Saturday, January 1st, and, excuse me, Friday, January 1st and Saturday, January 2nd, for all levels of tennis players. And from beginning at 11 through 3:30, they'll take a break at 1 to eat lunch, I'm sure. They will only have a maximum of 10 students. And they, they do follow the CDC guidelines imposed by them. And they would, they're building their, their participation out here, and this will be another great, great way for them to do that.
You have a motion to approve?
Second.
Take it. All right. Do you have a comment?
Just have one comment, one question. Are we overloading the limited park facilities that we have with these camps and lessons and all that? It seems like every meeting we're talking about adding camps and lessons and just more times that the facilities aren't open for just regular recreational use.
You're talking about two days here. I don't think that's...
But just, okay. I mean, every meeting we're talking about more camps and all that. That's my only thing is that we just, we have very limited space. If we overload it with camps, then people aren't just going to be able to go play like normal.
Well, Colleen, wasn't that addressed, sorry, wasn't that addressed at our meeting as far as making sure that there was access, there was equity, all of those things?
Yes, ma'am.
Because you haven't had any phone calls with people saying, I'm trying to play and I can't get in, or, I mean, yeah. It's kind of worked out.
No, and, you know, they're just trying to build, you know, their availability to residents too because it is limited otherwise.
Right, and it's just at the park right now, it's basketball.
Pickleball. Actually, pickleball is probably the most, the busiest of all.
The overs. But they, but they do it early in the morning.
But not too early.
I can't get to bed at so early.
That's, and then the soccer's on the beach.
Right.
So it's really, and tennis has tried a couple of times to get in, and they just haven't been able to, so, yeah.
You have a comment? Mr. Pope?
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Dr. Houghton?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Ms. Red?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mayor Goodwin?
Yes.
Great, I'll be happy to hear that. And may I say something about the business activity?
Yeah.
So I'd also like...
That's your employee, you know.
I'd also like to take the opportunity to say we're super excited to host the children at Folly River Park for our Santa event on Friday night, beginning at 5:00. We are booked solid, but we request that everyone be socially distanced and wear their masks and, and just bear with us with the flow since we, you know, had to make appointments. We will do our best to keep everybody safe in the flow well. It's going to be a beautiful night. And then the next day, Santa visiting the neighborhoods beginning at 12 o'clock at Folly River, or excuse me, Folly Beach County Park. And traveling east to west, or west to east, and heading down Folly Road as far as we can go. To probably going to need to hit King's Flats, I left that out. They are voting members of Folly. I didn't think about that. Can you tell them that James Island resident? I should have checked with that. But we look forward to that and just bear with us on the flow of that too because Santa gets really excited when he sees people. And I know he'll be waving, but he may be, you know, I don't know. I'm just going to try to keep Santa on track, is all I have to say. Because the reindeer have to take off.
Exactly. Good luck.
Really, it's because the reindeer have the day off is really what I'm concerned about. So anyway, thank you guys for your support.
So have an approval for the agenda?
Send me one.
Have a second? We'll take it without exception. Approval of the minutes from November 10th, have a motion to approve?
Send me one.
Have a second?
Second.
Any additions, corrections? Let's call that one.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Dr. Houghton?
Yes.
Ms. Red?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Mayor Goodwin?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving along to personal appearances. Is Mr. Kinter on the line?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Alan Kinter is up first.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My camera won't work, but I'm here.
Okay. It's okay. Turn up your volume a little bit.
Okay.
Okay, you're up. Give us your name and address for the books, you know the route.
My name's Alan Kinter. I live at 620 East Erie. And I'm here tonight to request permission for a sewer extension in between the two CCPRC properties on Arctic from the corner of Second and Arctic for about 150 feet down the street. This 206 East Arctic gives a lot that is residential to family. And so it's, you know, pretty much normal guidelines, 10, 10, 10, 10, 35% lot coverage, normal height restriction. And so in looking at the, or someone said it might be possible to just run the line down the street. The PRC already has access to the manhole at the intersection of Second and Arctic. And, excuse me, so no one, I guess the lot and house right across the street on the Arctic side is new. So this line that comes down the street would be just used for 206, which would be two single-family residences. I think the square footage limitation is something like the typical 10,500, you know, 3,600, so. That, I think that's pretty much it.
So you're asking us to extend an existing sewer? That's what you're asking?
Well, yeah, I'm asking if Todd can.
And...
It would be the city's, but he would have to pay for it.
Yeah, well, we, we turned that down all the way to the Supreme Court. Being the city was somebody else paying for it. But see if I have a motion? Nobody wants to make a motion?
Okay.
We talked about it. I told you where we was going, but I'm sorry.
Okay, well, give it a try. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks. See ya.
You know, at some point, and I know that we've heard this for a long time because, you know, because the zoning, that people have this great fear that if you increase the sewer, you can lead to multifamily dwellings and things of that sort. But we have really done a jam-up job, I think, of attacking those zoning issues. But the one thing that keeps nagging at us when we talk about environmental concerns are the septic tanks. Every time we turn around, that is our biggest problem moving forward, our biggest risk of exposure of these septic tanks. I know that people fear multi-families and bigger condos and all that, but we've tightened up our zoning a lot. I think at some point, we would need to kind of take a look at that. I don't know, nobody wants to jump in, but that is a huge environmental concern, especially as you're talking about rising sea levels, climate change, things of that sort. It's only going to get worse.
Well, let me say this about that. Sewer lines aren't the answer for environmental concerns because the leakage that is allowed for a sewer line by DHEC is a lot worse than a septic system. And if a septic system is working correctly, which we try to make sure they keep working correctly, you have a lot better control over environmental impact than you do with a sewer line.
Right. It's just come up every time. It seems like Eric's group, they keep saying like, hey, the one thing you can do environmentally is... It's like, you know, I get it from that standpoint because, I don't know, it's a, it's a tough question.
I ain't going to be the one that brings that up.
I know. I know. You're hated on one hand because like you know what the possibilities are, but you know environmentally, you're trying to do something to try things, you're just, you're one of those rock and a hard place kind of issues. You know, nobody wants to see when condos go up all down Front Beach. But, you know, some of these aging septic systems that aren't as taken care of as we'd like them to be could be trouble.
Yeah, that's why we have inspections in between sales and that kind of stuff.
Or, well, you could also say that's why I have the zoning, but that could change.
So next is, are you ready? Do you have any? No? No one? Okay. Very good. Did you have any citizens' comments sent in, Ms. Ray?
The only one was sent in at the beginning of the meeting. She was talking about, sorry. She was talking about the fines for the golf cart ordinance. She said, "Please reconsider forcing the local golf cart business to pay fines that should be responsibility of the driver slash renter before continuing it, continuing to rent golf carts. This is irrational and unnerving to me." And then she continues on during the pandemic, and this is from Bethany Anderson at 6 o'clock tonight.
Does she rent golf carts?
She does, not to my knowledge.
Okay. All right. No boards of commission reports tonight, so we're old business ordinance 15-20. Ordinance, Amendment Chapter 163, Zoning District, Section 16305 Overlay District by adopting the recommended, recommendation of the rethink Folly Road corridor study to require 12-foot wide multi-use path to be installed upon the development or redevelopment of any non-single-family use project within the Folly Road corridor overlay. This is the second reading. Have a motion for approval?
Send me one.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Dr. Houghton?
Yes.
Ms. Red?
Yes.
Mr. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Mayor Goodwin?
Yes.
So ordinance 24-20, ordinance amending Chapter 168, non-conforming Folly Beach ordinance in Section 16804, non-conforming lots by, of record by applying the merger doctrine and requirements for street access to substandard lots adjacent to the marsh and oceanfront state jurisdictional lines. The second reading, have a motion for approval?
Send me one.
Have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? You're up.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Red?
Yes.
Dr. Houghton?
Yes.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Mayor Goodwin?
Yes.
Ordinance 25-20, ordinance amending Chapter 152 Flood Damage Prevention by adding language from the South Carolina Model Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance per the recommendations of the State Flood Plane Coordinator's Office. Second reading, have a motion for approval?
Send me one.
Have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Hello, I'm sorry, this is Tim Grady. I'm late. I apologize.
Yeah, well, you just hang on. So you ready?
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Dr. Houghton?
Yes.
Ms. Red?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mayor Goodwin?
Yes.
Okay, because it's unusual times, we usually wouldn't go back, but I'm going to go back and let you speak, Mr. Grady. So you need to give us your name, address, that kind of information for the record, and then make your presentation.
Yes, sir. My name is Tim Grady. I live at 1467 Harbor Gate Boulevard in Mount Pleasant, 29464. I am a local photo producer and location manager. And I was contacted by ABG Creative out of California. And they're working for a company called American Eagle. I'm sure you guys are, everybody is aware of their clothing. Um, they hope to do a photo shoot on, uh, to scout it the twenty-sixth of December and to shoot the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. And, uh, for the talent, they're using, um, the, uh, actors from the Outer Banks TV show. And, uh, to make this happen, they've told me that they're gonna have thirty people on the crew with, uh, the talent, and I just assume in typical film manner, they're just underestimating it, so I said forty people. And, uh, I know we're gonna, they would like to use, uh, two thirty-eight foot motorhomes to get the talent ready, like hair, makeup, wardrobe, and we'd use, uh, Sprinter vans to shuttle. Um, I've been in contact with the Charleston County Parks and Rec Commission, and they've already pre-approved, uh, the permit based on, um, my experience with them and, uh, the plan that we have uh, to park out at the old, uh, Coast Guard Base or the Inlet Heritage Preserve, as it's called. Um, of course, we park as we usually do, not blocking access all the way down to the beach for the safety vehicles. Um, and, uh, they just wanna take some pretty pictures, uh, on the beach and, um. You know, the, uh, we'd, uh, set up catering in front of the motorhomes and, uh, have some good food and have, they, uh. Yes, we wouldn't stop anybody else from accessing, uh, the park or the beach or anything like that. Is there any other details that, uh, I can provide or?
Yeah, so what are you actually asking us?
We're just asking for a permit to shoot on the beach, take some pictures. Uh, some, they're doing a video behind the scenes as well.
And they're gonna be parking, where are they gonna be?
Well, you have a motion before we discuss that.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
What kind of, are you using any machinery on the beach or anything, exactly, can you describe? What kind of inconveniences can we expect? Are you going through, are you tearing up any vegetation, are you using any heavy machinery? Um, boom trucks, cranes, lighting, things of that sort?
No, this is a, a photo shoot, the video side, like where they maybe have some grip stuff like flags and scrims, which they just use to bounce, uh, light or block light are usually like, the, the stuff we take out on the beach is usually like an eight by eight, nothing very large. Um, they usually don't even like to take stands out onto the beach. Um, uh, we usually travel very light, I know they did mention a small grip truck with a, like a one-ton package, I know one-ton sounds like a lot, but it's not, it's like a van full of like sea stands and flags and such. Um, we'd maybe have like hand-pulled carts out on the beach. Um, oh, maybe have like a propane heater. Uh, of course, we'd have the safety fire extinguisher with us. I know that we'll be having, according to the high-impact permit, we'll have a police officer or a fireman with us as well while we're out there. Um, you know, they'd have coolers with drinks, of course, we'd clean up any cans that we'd use. Um, I know that they like a lot of the dead trees, they like a lot of the rocks, they like, um, that flats area now that's kind of, uh, behind what used to be that lagoon. If you walk down onto the inlet preserve and you turn to the left and there's that big concrete block, if you turn left there and walk through the woods, it kind of looks like sand flats back there, and it's really gorgeous. I imagine they'd wanna shoot back there mostly.
So where are you talking about putting this truck?
Oh, the two, the two motorhomes would, there'd be no, nothing on the beach, no trucks, no vehicles on the beach. Um, the two motorhomes would be parked on the concrete slab at the Inlet Heritage Preserve. And it, I just said, if we can't park everything safely there, like the vans to shuttle the crew out there, we're gonna park them, talk to the Charleston County Parks and either park at the, uh, boat landing or at, they have another, uh, parking lot on East Ashley um, that we can use.
No, they don't.
I don't think the boat. The lifeguard, the lifeguard parking lot, I think, um, between Ashley and, uh, Arctic on Second Street, the east.
So it's not like nothing but photographer equipment, bottles, light, light stuff, things of that sort, no machinery or anything on the beach or in any sensitive area? Um.
Yeah.
So that, wait.
Oh, well, they, they maybe wanna use a strobe light, like a B four, which is very small with a battery pack in the light head. They weigh about twelve pounds, and they usually go on a very light, like, uh, stand or a sea stand.
Yeah, no, we're, we're talking about heavy impacts on the environment, whether you're gonna be taking heavy machinery on the beach.
No, not at all.
Through the trees and then possibly just damaging.
Nothing, no, nothing like that at all, this is a photo shoot.
Will you have, will you have someone at the boat landing monitoring the parking situation? Cause there's elongated parking there just for boat trailers only.
Well, if, if we need that space, I will talk to the Charleston County Parks ahead of time, I'll have it coned off and we'll have a certain area that we'll rent from them. And, uh, you know, it'll be neat and orderly and I'll have signs and, like we always do. We don't wanna, we don't want anybody from our crew to do anything that would negatively impact anybody at all.
What's the duration, um, how long will you have the trailers, uh, set up in the county park?
Oh, it would just be during the day on the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. Now, they, they might ask only to shoot one of the days at this point, it's hard to tell. Um, they're looking at a number of properties, but the, I know that they definitely wanted to shoot out there at least one day, maybe like a day and a half.
I know.
So the twenty-seventh and twenty.
I know Andrew isn't here, but was there any hesitation? Andrew? Chief, do you have any hesitation about this?
Not based on what you described, no.
Okay, thank you.
Where, so you're gonna have like motorhomes, is that, those also serve as the restrooms for everybody that's gonna be out there at the lighthouse?
Well, you know, now that you mentioned it, I could get a couple of, uh, cordelacs out there, no problem, or a fancy black tie bathroom, if that makes sense.
Seems messy there, yeah.
But yes, there are bathrooms in the motorhomes, yes.
Okay.
They will pr- be primarily for hair, makeup and wardrobe for the talent though.
Yeah, I think Ms. Ray's point, you should, you should have some kind of restroom facilities out there for the thirty or forty people you have out there. And then just to clarify, the two thirty-eight foot trail, uh, campers that you do the makeup in will be inside the park on the pad inside the preserve. And all other vehicles with, will be parked remotely and you'll shuttle the thirty to forty people up to the park.
Well, no, I mean, we'd still keep a couple of vehicles there at the park, there's enough room we've done in the past, the, we park smart in that one corner, where we can line up all the vehicles in front and still have room to set up tables and chairs without blocking the road to the beach.
But will you be consuming all of the roadside parking in the cul-de-sac and along the dead end of East Ashley?
No, we won't take a single spot there.
Okay, that's fine.
So once you get on the beach, it's a standard photo shoot is what you're saying, straight, standard photo shoot. And we'll, okay, correct?
That's what I'm being told, and, uh, I, I have asked them a number of very aggressive, annoying questions to make sure.
Okay, thank you.
I'm very lucky that I've been able to complete a number of very successful photo shoots on the island without having a single problem.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Is it?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
No.
Mr. Greens?
Yes.
Doctor Hutton?
Yes.
Mayor Goodman?
No.
So you win.
Oh, great, thank you very much.
All right. Back to ordinances, twenty-six dash twenty.
We can make sure that the, uh, addition of those lavatories gets added to that application.
Isn't that just something that should be thought of? That's what I'm asking.
Well. An ordinance amending chapter seventy-three, I'll just move on here.
Cause he's got battle.
Hey, thank you, let's move on. An ordinance amending chapter seventy-three golf carts and rental speed vehicles by the beach code of ordinance is section seventy-three oh six. Golf carts and list, rental golf carts and rental speed vehicles by requiring the payment of outstanding fines prior to the issuance of rental golf cart details. Second reading, have a motion for approval, so moved, have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments?
To the one email earlier, we, we stated when we went through this, that the business is responsible for holding that information and charging the persons that are responsible. Uh, they, they have to, you know, take steps to ensure that their business model is set up for that, and that, that is on individual business, just like it is for every other different business for anything of, of a similar sort. Uh, we've, we've spoken about that a lot, that, you know, it's, you know, we're really trying to help them catch and make a call, public safety and get, you know, details of tickets and all that, we're trying to make it as accessible as possible for them to keep their customers responsible for these fines.
And just to add on to that, one of the things that they really have to do is to get credit card information upfront.
It's, it's, they're doing rent a car and deposit.
Right, you have to have deposits, and because that's, I think, the main problem is they're not, for whatever reason, they're the business model, but, you know, they need to secure that, make sure they get a, a credit card deposit on the rental, and then if anything should happen, same thing with a rental car, if you get a ticket or anything.
Right.
Rental car will charge you for it.
I, I just have a question of the chief. Sorry. I, I see it simply just as was stated, so do you have anything else to contribute to that? Because it's, it's holding the, the rental, um, person responsible, is there anything?
No, I, I don't see any difference than when you run a car from perks or.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Doctor Hutton?
Yes.
Mayor Goodman?
Yes.
New business, appointments to boards, commissions and committees.
Parks.
Yeah. The planning commission. So. Mr. Pope will call your name, and you can just say the last name of the person you would like to vote for. Are you all ready? Are you ready, Ms. Ike?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Greens?
Carter.
Mr. Farley?
Carter.
Ms. Ray?
Carter.
Mr. Parker?
Carter.
Doctor Hutton?
Hi.
Mr. Rich?
Mr. Carter.
Mayor Goodman?
It don't matter.
There you go, Ben.
I'm gonna vote for Carter. Okay, so Randy Carter is back on the board. All right, now we're up to ordinance eleven dash twenty, Fifth Amendment. One we all love dearly.
Motion approved.
Emergency orders, do you have a second?
That's it.
Okay, so this will run through February the fourteenth, drop dead date.
Um. Valentine.
Next.
Yeah, we get to take our mask off for Valentine's Day.
Some people might need to keep them on. Bill.
Okay.
I have February fifth written down.
Oh.
February what?
Well, February fifth, but.
February eighth.
Okay.
Okay.
But it does need to be from today.
Okay, that's fine, no problem.
What's our next move?
Meeting's on the ninth.
Yeah.
So.
Is it?
Isn't it?
Make it the tenth.
You can't, you can't go too far.
I thought it was.
We can't go to the fourteenth, the tenth is the day after the meeting, so we can't go to the tenth.
Tenth, yeah.
Go to the fourteenth, how's that, that's not sixty days.
I know, we'll be addressing it at the next meeting, the ninth.
Right, but you can't go more than sixty days.
I know, but he's saying, he said you have to go from the day to sixty days.
Right, that's what I'm, yeah, so the furthest we can go is the end, not the.
So it would have to be.
We'll have a special meeting on the ninth. Oh, that's a, that's a cancel meeting.
Could we extend it for thirty days and just?
I really don't think one day is gonna make two.
Well, yeah, that's right, we could just renew it in January after thirty days and then it'll go pass the meeting, whatever, blah, blah, blah.
So moved.
Yeah. That'd be next time, right, any other questions or comments?
Well, uh, what do we just decide, just what's the date?
Make it thirty days, and we'll readdress it in January.
Okay, fine, thank you.
That's only because of the date thing, not because we're laboring.
Well.
We'll make it, wait a minute, we're gonna make it sixty days, but in January we can come back and extend it another thirty.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so, wait a minute, I hear this.
As long as it's sixty days from the day.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it can't go, yeah, but we could, we could extend it quicker than sixty days.
Well, you just let it die for a day and we revisit it in February.
We can extend it again in, uh.
January.
Yeah. Is there anything wrong with letting it expire for twenty-four hours?
We're all the same, just saying the same thing differently. Just, I know, I gotta say.
It's like being a big rush to break the law.
Okay, so just for, just for clarity, what are we voting on?
Voting on to extend the emergency ordinance for a standard sixty days.
Okay.
From today.
So February.
February eighth.
Okay.
All right?
All right, Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yeah.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Goodman?
Yes.
So we're on ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty, ordinance amending chapter ninety-five animals, section ninety-five oh seven certification vaccine required by clarifying expiration of animal tag. Rather, clarification. Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Just approve.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Witt?
Yes.
Doctor Hutton?
Yes.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Mayor Goodman?
Yeah.
Resolution forty-six dash twenty, a resolution by Folly Beach City Council setting aside budgeted funds as used, used as payment of property taxes to the James Island Public Service District for annexed property. Have a motion for approval? So moved, have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Greens?
Yes.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Doctor Hutton?
Yes.
Mayor Goodman?
Yes.
Resolution forty-seven dash twenty, a resolution by Folly Beach City Council amending the Folly Beach Personnel Handbook by removing grades from the compensation study and evaluating sections to reflect the compensation study. Have a motion for approval? Crickets. So much for that one.
So proud of everybody.
Resolution forty-nine dash twenty?
Forty-eight.
Did I skip one?
Yep.
Uh, stuck together, I guess. Oh, we don't wanna do forty-eight.
Right, yes, we shall tell.
Hey, stuck together, I mean. Yeah, we don't wanna do forty-eight. Resolution forty-eight by Folly City Council authorizing the payment of twelve hundred dollars from the city council, city council discretionary reserve account to the Folly Beach Exchange Club for sponsorship of the twenty-twenty-one Folly Beach Exchange Club slash fair golf tournament. Have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second. Um, I brought some things to show y'all, just because this is what we did before. So last year, we've, Exchange Club was first to organize this golf tournament for a couple of years now. Last year, I was the only member of the Exchange Club on city council, I went to community promotions for sponsorship level and all that stuff. Last year, I was the only member of the Exchange Club on city council. I went to community promotions for sponsorship level and all that stuff, and they approved it. This year, with three of us being on the Exchange Club board, I felt, just for transparency sake, that it would be better, instead of kind of pressuring that, to go through council discretionary, cause that's kind of our pot of money and not another outlet of the city that, you know, could kind of get wasted that way. It's, it's upfront, three of us are there, just, and it's our money, and it's, thought it would be a little cleaner that way in the view of the public. But this is what we did last year, and it turned out really well, the logo ball, put the city logo on all the golf balls, we gave it to all the golfers. So everybody got one of these. And it was just a way for the city to kind of be a part of our golf tournament. It's been a really great time, really great success. Everybody's loved it. But that's the kind of stuff to do. Here's, a couple of years ago, we made ball markers, the Exchange Club, and we put the, the newest Folly Beach logo that we had, the new one with the folly that different things were in from the website. We gave those to golfers, and things like that, just really pushing the island and promoting this as, hey, we're all just mostly Folly people that play in it. So it's a, just, it's a nice thing the community does, and the Exchange Club splits the money with the Folly Angels, and we give, you know, scholarships to island residents, you know, clothes drives, food drives, all that kind of stuff is what the Exchange Club uses the money for. So I just wanna kind of give y'all a little heads up about that, explain why we did it, for why we asked from council discretionary this year, just to be a little more transparent. But I do wanna make a, I do wanna make an amendment, because in looking at this, I'm trying to find the email. We have three different council discretionary accounts right now. We have one that has a thousand dollars in it that expires at the end of June. We have one reserve with like eighty-five hundred dollars in it that is there that we can pull out of. And we have another, I gotta find Lee's email, I wanna say it's like thirty-five hundred dollars that we did put in there this past budget season, but it's in another reserve account that if we don't spend it by the end of the year, it rolls into the other reserve. So just to clean things up, I'm gonna make an amendment that we, we used a thousand dollars from account thirty-six fifty and the other two hundred from reserve account sixty-nine hundred. So to clear, I don't want the thousand dollars to just go away. That way, that's taken care of. We don't have to worry about switching that over to the reserve account at the end of the season. So I make a motion, we take a thousand dollars from council discretionary thirty-six fifty and a two hundred from sixty-nine hundred. If I can get a second?
Second.
Thanks. Just to keep it clean, that way we don't lose that money. If we don't remember it at the end of the year, that money would just go into general fund if we didn't designate it for a reserve account. So now we don't have to worry about it.
So I just have a question about process.
Sure.
Reserved, do we have to vote then again to take it out of reserve or get it?
It's what we're doing now, but we're wiping out that thousand dollars that would go away at the end of the year. And so that way, we don't have to worry about moving it to reserve at the end of the year. So now, moving forward, anything that we want to spend out of council discretionary would come from a reserve account, and it'd just be just a resolution just like this.
Okay, thank you. Also, can you speak a little more about where the monies go as far as serving the community and so on?
Sure, I don't have, did bring a whole lot of information. But, I mean, everybody knows the Exchange Club, the things we do out here. We have college scholarships that we give out, I think we upped it to three local residents this year. We do a lot of our stuff, we have our Golden Age Dinner. Unfortunately, some things got postponed this year, just because we, we do cater and drive towards a lot of younger and older people. And with, with everything going on, kind of taking a backseat to that, just to kind of keep everybody's health in perspective. So we have like our Golden Age Dinner, we have all the widows on the island, we have a big Thanksgiving dinner, it's an awesome event. We have our One Nation Under God breakfast. We do different, like I said, the scholarships.
Flags.
We do the flags. Every flag display you see at the boat landing on the pier is, you know, courtesy of the Exchange Club and Matt Gueranger for the most part, cause he's there every time. With things of that sort, we've done, gee, we've supported Dean Norton, a lot of Low Country shelters for, for, for children's abuse, things of that sort. So I don't have my Exchange Club.
No, no.
Pamphlets in my hand.
Folly, Folly Be, Folly Angels.
Yeah. Kick into this, y'all hold the board too.
We award a, a public safety firefighter and public police of the year.
Just wanted to be clear about the list.
Public safety lunch or Public Works luncheon?
Public Works luncheon.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring clarity that it's a fundraiser, and it comes back.
Yes, ma'am. Boy. I'm gonna watch you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Dr. Hutton?
Yes.
Mayor Pittlin?
Yeah, I don't care where he's spelled it.
Exactly, I responded my text message.
That was like, you sell it, you sure, buddy? Okay, resolution forty-nine dash twenty, a resolution by Folly Beach City Council authorizing transfer of sixty thousand dollars from this IT contract to operating supplies and part-time slash temporary salaries for the installation of infrastructure within the new city hall and its related expenditures. Have a motion for approval?
Send it with.
Have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Mr. Pope?
Dr. Hutton?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Mayor Pittlin?
Yes.
Okay, so, Dr. Hutton, would you like to start city council comments tonight?
I'm sorry, miss it.
Council comments.
Oh.
Free ran around your mouth.
I'm wishing everyone safe and happy holidays.
I'd like to congratulate Randy Carter on his reappointment to the planning commission. As well as wish everyone happy holidays.
Wish everyone happy holidays, happy new year, stay safe and all that. Also, there will be a smoke-free petition for on the beach, which is sand only, as well as beach accesses going live maybe tomorrow, and hopefully it will hit all of your social media outlets here soon. It's, you know, a good explanation of what's happening, and I feel like it's pretty clear that it's only the beach and the sand and beach accesses, not businesses or the street or anything like that. So look for that, and please sign it if you agree. Have a great night.
Tomorrow's a very special day. It's National Christmas Card Day to, and I encourage each, each one of the council members and the public as well to, to write a few extra Christmas cards this year to some people that are possibly homebound, elderly, sick, that, that are not having as good a Christmas as we are. We're blessed to be here, but, but just a reminder to, to send out a few handwritten cards to some of those that may not get the attention that they need. Also, obviously Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and Hanukkah's coming up on the tenth, I believe it is, for the eight-day Hanukkah series, so happy Hanukkah to all.
Happy holidays, hope everybody stays healthy.
Happy holidays. There have been a lot of events canceled due to COVID, but there are several events that are still going on. They're just trying to keep a COVID-friendly atmosphere, so please, you know, just check out the calendars. There's a lot of stuff going on, even though stuff's being canceled. Thank you.
So I forgot to mention during mayor's comments.
You don't get a second chance.
So glad to, so glad to get the other thing to do, but we've had, we've lost two longtime citizens out here. One was Mr. June Wells, who's very involved for years and years and years with the museum downtown, the Confederate Museum. And the other one was Duke Warren, who's been here, lived here for years and years and years. You might not have known Duke, but you probably knew his daughter Nancy Hussey, who's been very involved with surfers' healing over the years and the surfers. So, you know, our prayers throughout to those families. Tough time of year for losing the families, no matter what. All right, have a motion to adjourn?